Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education and Board Retreat, September 7, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda is the capital project presentation by Mr. Cahill.
Okay, thank you. So I'm very briefly going to talk about a proposed capital referendum and project for 2023. We tried this last year on December 6, 2022. We put a referendum before the community and it was not approved. We all know that. I think it was about eighty-three votes we lost by. We did a survey after that in January of this year to kind of get at some feedback and understand what happened. So I think the Bocce's Capital Project, the Orange County Bocce's Capital Project, kind of muddied the waters a little bit. We got feedback that people thought they maybe we couldn't afford both their project and our project. People were confused. They thought it was one and the same. You know, people were confused about the location of the vote. We had the vote here at the Ed Center rather than Central Valley Elementary School. So it was close. I think there were some unusual circumstances and it wasn't approved. But we're proposing to go back out to the public on December 5, 2023 with another referendum, asking for the authority to initiate these capital projects. And in New York State, we've talked about this before, we need the voter approval, authorization to initiate capital projects. In the absence of voter approval, you're not eligible for building aid and SED can kind of make some waves for you in terms of approval of your plans and specifications. So we're going back out, presumably, potentially, right, early December. We've scaled the project down, or the program, I should say, because really it's made up of many projects, many individual capital projects, which would have to be submitted to the state ed department, be approved, looked at and approved. We're emphasizing health and safety items like fire alarms, CO devices, preservation of our facilities. We talked a lot about this, brick repointing, roof replacements, and replacement of obsolete and outdated equipment, boilers and HV systems. I used to say HVAC, but there's really no AC in this program. It's all boilers and heating systems, ventilation. So the final cost estimate would be about $98 million, cut back from $115.6 million. And so what I'm showing here in this slide is basically the slide that we showed last year, which is all the schools and the individual projects at each building. And on the right-hand side, there's the other buildings. So we're literally doing work in every, I think, every district building, every school, and the non-instructional buildings as well. And what I've done is I've just in red crossed out the items which were cut. So we realized we had to scale this back to some degree. We had to prioritize certain things. And again, the priorities were based on life safety, health safety, you know, major basic elements like heating systems. We based it on the condition of the buildings. We used the building condition surveys. So buildings that were in the worst shape or had the, you know, the oldest systems would get the attention first. And, you know, we scaled this back. I obviously won't go through all this. We're going to hear a lot more about this and the individual projects in the near future, you know, but this is what we had to do, make some tough calls. So we've talked a lot about the rationale and the benefits of the project. And the bottom line is we've deferred a lot of capital maintenance projects over the years, over the decades. We haven't really done anything major in decades, really. We did the athletic facility, but that didn't really get to some of these, these building systems, or have failed. We have outdated building systems. They're past their useful life and we really need to replace them. Like, it's sort of like now is the time. And, you know, the other thing I've talked about is, as a school, we can't really afford to have these systems fail and become inoperable. We have to have heat in the winter. We have to have a roof that's functioning. We have to have functioning fire alarms. We have to have functioning public address systems. I mean, these are all safety issues as well. You know, the public address system, for instance. Electricity, there's a lot of electrical upgrades in this. So all these things must be at some point replaced. And, yes, Michael.
I have a question. So let's say, you know, it happened last year and one of the boiler systems absolutely fails. So we would have to fix that or replace it. And what you had shared the last time is a lot of those parts aren't available anymore. So would we then have to do it at a cost without the state aid? Because I think that's important for the public to know.
We would. And, I mean, there are some provisions for an emergency replacement, but generally we would have to do that and it would not be approved by SED in the same way that we would with a capital referendum. You know, the other piece of this that I talked about is the repair costs are not addable. So over time, that adds up. You know, it's not, it's not millions of dollars, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I'm going to talk about building aid. That's what I talk about with state aid. We're getting generally about 70 cents on the dollar back for all of that. So the other piece that we talk about in this project, and I mentioned the security vestibules. We have, I think, three buildings, four buildings. Central Valley will get a vestibule very soon, but a handful of buildings that do not have a vestibule now would be part of this project. We've talked about the opportunity that we have as a retiring existing debt to bring on new debt. You know, I go through the, prove the reliability, lower the maintenance costs, reduce our energy consumption. It's all savings, sort of soft cost savings. We're going to improve the educational environment. There's not a lot of money here for refurbishing classrooms and things, but there is some. And obviously, if we have better buildings with better systems, it's more comfortable, it's safer, et cetera. You know, and so the bottom line is we're really just trying to maintain and preserve the investment we've made in our buildings. The district over the years has invested millions, tens of millions, probably hundreds of millions of dollars. This is what you need to do periodically. I've talked about this in their own home. You need to replace your roof. You need to replace your boiler. You need to repave your driveway, et cetera. And we have the same, we have the same thing we have to do. And like I've said, it's now is the time. It's like every winter, we go through a thing with, with our director of facilities. The boiler at Smith Clove is malfunctioning. The boiler at the high school is leaking. We're worried that it's gonna, it's gonna go. So it's, it's really pervasive everywhere.
So what do you say to public comments that say, why did we wait so long and have such a big ask?
Well, I think, I think at this point, we were, we were dealing with some of these issues. We were trying to get to the point where, and we have talked about this before, where we could do this in conjunction with the retirement of existing debt. So we're literally at a point where there are a couple of breakpoints. We've just passed one, but then we have one in another two years, and then a year after that. So by waiting, we're able to, again, I'm going to show you the finance of this, finances of this, do this huge amount of work, you know, with almost no, or I would say, no budgetary impact. So there was some reason and rationale, some thought about waiting till we got to this point in time.
And would you say COVID also delayed a lot of these items?
Without a doubt. I mean, COVID was, right, very unusual circumstance, very challenging for us, this is good for everybody, for the world. So yeah, that definitely put everything on hold for a couple of years.
I have a question.
Sure.
If it passes and something happens immediately to one of the systems, will it be able to be retroactive and be included?
In terms of?
Any of the repairs on systems?
I think at that point, what we, what would make sense, it depends on the nature of the failure, but try to repair it with like a minimal kind of investment with the idea that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna replace it and do it correct in the correct way.
So what is the timeline if this is approved? When would work begin?
Well.
Is that one of your slides?
Good question. It's not. So that's a good question. I didn't want to get ahead of myself, but if all went well, let's say we have the referendum.
When all goes well.
What's that?
When all goes well.
When all goes well, thank you. On December 5, 2023, we would then say have, I don't know, six months of design and planning with the architects. We would then submit, and we would try to stagger things, so we would do things that are easier and simpler. Let's say roof projects first, right? Sort of straightforward. There's less engineering involved. We'd submit that to the state ed department. So let's say that takes us from December into June. And then let's say the state ed department, they have to review and approve our plans and specifications, takes another four to six months. So that would take us from the summer into the winter-ish, or winter. We would then do, go through a bid process, put together bids, put the bid out, receive the bids, analyze the bids, award contracts, probably in May. And we could maybe begin work as soon as the summer of 2025. Maybe mobilize sooner even.
Okay.
So it's a long process.
So a lot could happen in that. I mean.
For sure.
Prioritizing simple projects over potential projects that could need immediate attention.
Yeah. I mean, it's one of those things, who knows, right? Like what, what's going to happen? We know that, and we've done this. We've repaired boilers. They can be repaired. Some of the boilers that we have are so old that, you know, they, they don't build them like that anymore. So, you know, we have spent money to, to keep them going. And that's what we'd have to do, you know, in the short run, if something were to happen.
Okay.
So a question regarding, I get that there's no, currently, there's no AC and HVAC. But is there a plan to add it back in during the future phase, not of this work, but just in general? Because there are concerns that are happening.
Yeah. No, I understand. And I think, well, the one thing I would say, there is, there's nothing in this project, this scope of work for air conditioning, central air conditioning in any of our buildings. That was one of those, I think I talked about the nice-to-have scope, and then we cut that back to the need-to-have, and then we cut that back even a little bit more to the really need-to-have, which is where we're at. The one thing, and I don't want to get people's hopes up, but the one thing we're analyzing is instead of doing some very expensive boiler replacements, for instance, Central Valley is a steam boiler, steam system. We want to replace that with hydronic water, because steam is difficult to deal with. The leaks are a problem. So it's relatively expensive. So it's not just a boiler. It's also all the piping. It's the univents in every classroom. The hallway, you know, needs to be affected by the pipe, new piping. So it's a relatively expensive fix. It's not just replacing an in-kind system like a boiler. Like, that's what we would do at the high school. Be an in-kind system would be much simpler and less expensive. We could, and we're looking into it, I've asked the architect to look into it, almost like heat pump technology. So it's fully electric. So it's, we're not burning any fossil fuels. It's all electric. It's sort of where the world seems to be going. I think in New York City, that's a requirement. New York State for new construction of commercial buildings, I think that's now a requirement. So that, so if it was cost-effective to do that, the other benefit is it also generates air conditioning. So there's the potential, and I don't want to get everyone's hopes up, but we're looking into that as a way to have a forward-looking system, lowers our carbon footprint, more environmentally friendly, and costs the same, does the same things, but also gives us air conditioning.
And would that be something that happens in two years, three years, more time than that?
I think it would, this entire project, we, I just said to Don, we wouldn't put a shovel in the ground for two years. And then what we're planning on is four years out for that. So, and I think some of the, the larger HVAC things would be like year two, three, four. It wouldn't, wouldn't be the first year. The first year, we would take a little bit of time and do some of the more straightforward things.
You would still need boilers, right?
Pardon?
Hot water. You would still need hot water boilers.
Well, in this, in this kind of system with the heat pump technology, you would not. So the heat pump, the electric system, would replace the traditional conventional boiler system.
In both, I understand the air conditioning and the heating systems.
That's right.
But my understanding is that most of those systems are heat by air heat, not by baseboard heat.
Well, it would be, it would be air heat.
But then hot water, when you open up the faucet, you still get hot water.
Well, it would be, what we would do is, it wouldn't be the boiler. It would be a much smaller hot water.
Smaller system.
Yeah. I mean, would be infinitely smaller and less complex system. But it's, you know, it's sort of, it's a technology that is forward-thinking. It's, it's.
A lot of houses have that now.
That's right. It's much easier to do in a residential application. I mean, the other thing, you can also, which people are doing, you can tie in solar voltaic panels to them. So if you can put that on your building, your building is now generating electricity, which is heating and cooling your building. You lower your carbon footprint, not burning fossil fuels. And if you can do all that, it's cost-effective.
There's a lot of upfront cost, though.
Pardon?
A lot of upfront cost.
Yes.
When it comes to solar.
But that's why we're examining. We're seeing, we're looking at the feasibility of that kind of thing. But that goes to your, your commentary, Mel, about air conditioning.
Yep.
Thank you. We are looking into potential solar applications and things of that nature, like we talked about, to see whether or not we could get some money back from the government to implement those kind of systems.
Have we looked at, I was at an OXPMA meeting last night, and one school district's getting ready to turn up their geothermal to heat and cool their building. So that's an interesting concept. Have we ever looked at that?
We have. We've considered it. And for the most part, geothermal, it works best with new construction and in new applications. It doesn't, it's not, does not work so well retrofitted to a building. But I have had that discussion with our architect.
You have to dig. You have to, you have to dig and you have to bury the pipes, which is very expensive. I think the cost is, for the homes, it's between $25,000 and $30,000 just to install for each house. So it's kind of.
Just figure that out.
Yeah. No, it's, it's a, it's a good thought. And it's.
We'll see how theirs works when they turn it on.
Right. Tremendous potential.
They say it's 90% savings, but it's actually a lot less than that. It's a 60 to 70%.
Yeah. And I don't think it's as successful as they tout it. I'm in insurance claims for construction sites, and we see a lot of geotechnical issues right now. I think it's a system that hasn't been perfected yet, but the PR for it is out there and people are very happy with it or thinking they're going to be happy with it. But right now, I don't think the technology.
It has potential.
Where it is. Yeah, it has potential, right?
Solar, solar definitely works well. Okay.
Anything else? Moving on. So financial impact and the proposed plan. So we've talked about some of these elements that I'm going to discuss in the past. So we've talked about building aid. Building aid is a program through New York State. It's available to school districts for capital projects. So we're projecting we'd get about 70% back reimbursement through building aid. And it's generally over a 15- or 20-year period. It's eligible expenses multiplied by building aid ratio. So our building aid ratio is 74.1% right now. Now that can change over time. And the trend has been, ours is going up, which is good, you know, for, for us, for building aid purposes. You know, but that's one of those things, like there's certain challenges or certain assumptions we're making. That's one of those assumptions embedded in this projection. We'd also be putting down money, like I'm saying, putting down like you're, as though you're buying a house with our capital reserve. So the capital reserve is a savings mechanism for school districts to set aside money for capital work. So we'd be putting down about 25% of the cost right now. In the original, I was going to talk about it, I can mention it now, in last year's sort of financial model, we were projecting putting down 20 million from the reserve. So I bumped that number to 24 million. I think that's very doable. We're at about 18 million right now. So we're, and we've, we've been adding about, on average, about 3.1 million a year since we did the reserve. So in the next six years, I think we can, we can easily put in an additional $6 million to the reserve to fund this project. I talked about the retirement of the debt. So again, it's, it's interesting, though. You're retiring debt, but you're also losing building aid associated with that debt. So it's sort of like two variables that are moving at different rates. So it's not, it's not entirely like, oh, we got all this room in our budget. But what, what, the difference is the local share, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. The local share is the net impact to your budget, right? So it's the local share is your, your debt service expense, your principal, your interest as you repay that over time. And we have, I think at this point, about three bonds and an energy performance contract minus the building aid associated with those projects. So that's the local share, and that's the, you know, the budgetary impact. So for this project, I'm going to show a schedule, a lot of numbers in a moment. But for this project, with the assumptions that we're making in terms of state aid and the capital reserve, the average budgetary impact over the first 15 years of repayment, so that local share is a negative number. It's minus $37,000, $37,127. So we've crafted this in such a way, we've, we're able to save and put down this capital reserve to have no impact on our budget. And we can do that because we're getting 70% back in building aid. We're putting 25% down, and that very small difference of local share is being absorbed with the retirement of our existing debt.
So, yeah. So we're putting $24 million down. So we're decreasing the cost of the project to 75, 76 million?
The borrowing would be that, correct. Yep.
And then 70% of that is being reimbursed to us.
70% of the entire project, $98 million. So that's one of the advantages of the capital reserve. You can leverage it. So in other words, that's also eligible for building aid. Building aid is based on the full cost. I'll give you an interesting example. So we redid the track, right? We had some facilities enhancements to our athletic complex. So we, that cost us 8.4 million. We borrowed about 4.4 million. We put down 4 million. That project generates positive cash flow to us. It costs us about $246,000 a year in debt service, but we received $427,000 in building aid. So that's the idea of the leveraging, when you use your capital reserve, you put more money down, you can actually be in a positive cash flow position with building aid for capital work.
I think that's important for the community to know, because I always hear how many millions of dollars the fields cost. And there's a perception that that's what it costs when it's really not the case.
That's right.
So I think it's helpful to understand this better.
So the logic here is to encourage districts to be fiscally responsible and to have the money to start the project. But once you start the project, the states will come out and support you on that. Is that, am I getting this correctly?
Well, it's, you're right. It's, you're going to borrow to do these capital improvements that are needed. You're, and the way building aid works is districts that have greater need get more building aid. So a very wealthy district would have a very low building aid ratio, and therefore they might get back 5%. So they have to basically fund all this capital work through the taxes.
So we're in the unique, we're in the unique position where we get 71% of it back.
Correct. Correct. I mean, it's, other districts are in that position. Some are higher, actually. Very needy district. I think it caps out at 95% or 98% building aid. So that's why certain districts, which with high need, have these, can have these very extensive author, I know a district in Orange County, they have a $300 million authorization, no problem, because the, the local share is very small.
But, but the, the reimbursement is over 15 to 20 years. So it's like a amortization schedule.
That's right. And that's exactly right. They align it as though you borrowed for 15 or 20 years. And, and it's prudent, you know, to align it to the building. So in other words, if we're going to get building aid for 15 years, we're not going to borrow for 20. We're gonna, we're gonna align, you know, the, the borrowing to the building.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't the public approve this?
It's a great question.
I mean, is this lack of understanding or?
The last time it was, it was a Facebook and other things where there was misinformation put out the day of the vote.
Because I think we need to make it clear that this is not, there is no cost, practically no cost to the community, but we need to invest this money into, into the buildings.
The committee discussed, you know, there, I mean, you can't, you don't want a Monday night quarterback what happened with the last one. But there were some things that we could have done differently. I mean, one of the reasons that the field's proposal was so successful was we had an extensive PR campaign for that, even as board members. I mean, we were out talking to the community, going to meetings, sharing information that Patrick and his team gave us. And I think that's something that we've discussed moving forward with the, this proposal. And again, I think it's us encouraging, you know, Facebook is your friend when you need it to be, but it's not the best place to get information. So, you know, I think it's important for the community to reach out to not only the financial team, but if they have questions to us, I mean, I'm going to reach out to Patrick if they reach out to me. But, you know, again, it's, it's another opportunity for people that, you know, to, to get factual information instead of just seeing something on Facebook and it not being accurate.
Because more people look at us and say, well, the school is spending $98 million.
Right.
Without understanding that.
In actuality, it's not.
I think this might be able to be better consumed in some level of data visualization. Seeing the numbers, it's, as any kind of homeowner, you think of taxes. And when you see millions and millions and nine figures or now eight figures, it's still a whole lot of money. And initially, without you having a clear idea of what's going on, it's easy for someone to say, no.
Right, right.
So if there's a way for these numbers, which, as we talked about, they sound much better, but is put in front of people in a better way that even we can share with people when they come to us with, with the information, it may not be correct.
Like lawn signs all over town, like no cost, no tax impact.
Yeah.
Capital projects.
But the alternative is to let these things fail, and then we bear the brunt of replacing them without the state.
Exactly. That's what you're going to say.
And it's going to happen. It's happened in other districts.
I, I think the easiest way to think about it is if we say, the state is paying through the building aid program 70%, we're putting, it is district funds. We're putting down through the capital reserve another 25, right? And then the difference, that local share is, is being paid off and going away because old bonds are.
Now, put that in like three words, though, Patrick. Like, that's wordy.
Seventy, seventy, twenty-five.
But you can't tell the public all that. You need something, you know, a little of this.
I understand. We will definitely.
Zero would pass.
But yeah, I mean, in the end, people want to know what's the bottom line.
You just put equals, you know, state aid plus this equals zero tax impact or something like that.
What's the bottom line to the taxes? Because over the next 15, 20 years, the taxes will increase. Even though we're getting that money back, it will increase. So you have to sort of dissociate these projects from the future tax increases, because that is a completely separate issue. Because people see this as possibly something that's going to cause my taxes to go up tomorrow or day after. But the reality is, it's not.
And the reality is, if you don't invest in the district, it's a problem.
The taxes will go up even higher later on, because we will need, we'll need more money.
Right. We're being proactive a little bit, I mean, right?
Very.
Instead of reactive.
Well, we tried last year, so we're trying again. So, yeah.
Right. I think all these are great points. And I think, as Stacy said, we're, we're going to try our best to put a, a PR effort out there. It's going to start with all of us at the open house as to, maybe Patrick will give us some talking points. We can all start right there.
That's a great idea.
And then we're going to put up in every school. So when every parent comes into that school, there's going to be something right there that spells it out, has some pictures, like you said, in three words or less, exactly what the impact is. Well, maybe not three words, but three sentences or less. And, and we're going to, you know, make sure everyone understands the benefits and the no cost really associated with it, you know, a little better than we did last year.
So the next slide.
Yeah, give the public.
Three words or less. Maybe we'll skip this one. I would just say.
We talked about all that.
Three words is, this is too complicated.
That's right. This is what I like. I like to, I like to go to the schedule and really get in. But I, so I would just say this, is I'll say a couple of things about it. I would just say, this column is our local share. Again, I talked about it. It's the debt service less the aid. It's, it's a four-year plan where we would spend 24.5 million over each of four years, right? And we're saying 2025, the start of the project, would be our base year. And see, the, the next year, 2026, you see, we go from 1.3 million is our base local share to a 1.36, a tiny bit more, $16,000 increase. And then we drop 268,000 in the next year, 104,000 in the year after that, 99,000 in the year after that. And then we sort of level out here, where the local share doesn't change for about seven years, and then it sort of drops, goes back up again. And again, that has to do with the concept of the, the debt service coming on, the building aid coming on, the relative magnitude of those two things, the existing debt service going off. So it bounces around. So the easiest way I thought to explain it was just to take 15 years, which is the, you know, the useful life of most of these things. Well, actually, this will run over 20, and just say, what's the local share change over 15 years? So the estimate, the average change is minus $37,127. Less than.
Less than zero.
Less than zero.
Okay. That's three words?
So, so the state starts, the state starts reimbursing you at year one, but your projects don't begin until year four?
Well, that's, it's a good, that's a good question. The state, that, that's one of the challenges potentially, is you have to make sure that we have projects, that the project happens, there's no big delay, and that we close the project out and final, file a final cost report with SCD. That's what triggers your building aid. So I've had conversation, and this will be many projects, as I said before. I've had conversations with the construction manager, I've had conversations with the architect to say, look, there's assumptions built into this, you know, and so there's risk in anything you do in life, challenges, whatever, whatever word we want to use. We need to make sure that we organize this, we engineer this thing so that we don't have 10 projects bundled together, some of which are big and complex, and then that has the potential to be delayed, like have some unforeseen circumstance, change order, a delay, a dispute with the contractor, all those sorts of things. So, but that's a good point.
You want to unchain those contracts.
Right, exactly. Because we need that building aid to happen as quickly as it can. The fastest it can happen is 18 months after the commissioner's approval. So there's, there's rules about it. But we've structured it, you know, you can see here, like, what I did here is I'm showing, so this is actually your state aid. So you can see this is coming online, and that's part of the reason we're seeing a drop here, is there's more state aid coming online than debt service in that year. You see, we, we dropped 322,000 for the local share. Because again, as I said, those, those factors are moving at, at different rates. And so in that, in that year, the, there's more building aid coming on than there is debt service. And there's also, I think, let's see, 29, that might be, that might be the point where all the existing debt service is paid off, I think it is. But, but you can see how it's complicated. And, and that's why sometimes I'm reluctant to just make three-word blanket statements. I like to qualify everything.
But also it gives, it gives an opportunity to bank some money in the first couple of years. And again, if your projects don't start until later on, they're being approved, but you don't start. So you're sort of actually cash positive at that point.
But usually what we would do is we would, we would borrow, we'd do some short-term borrowing bands, right? Because you, you want to borrow just what you need. I, I don't want to borrow it all upfront, because you have to start paying, repaying and paying interest. So we would, we would borrow, again, over the course of the four years, as, as, as it's needed. We'd also use the capital reserve sort of strategically, maybe use that in the beginning, and then more in the beginning, and then plug it in, you know, as, as we closed out the, the full program.
So it'd be correct to assume that the first two years, 2025, 2026, is when we are in the red, and then after that, that share cost starts coming down.
It starts coming down. I wouldn't say we're in the red, it's just, that's the baseline here. 1.3 million, 1.3, 1.091, 900, 800, 564,000. So that starts to happen, because at that point, that's only new debt. Like, we've, we've paid off all the old, the state aid is now brought online.
So up here, though, you have 74.1% building aid. Is that an estimate you believe it's going to go up?
No, 74.1% is our current building aid ratio. So I think it will go up, Michael, but I'm saying 70% because I'm saying there are certain pieces of this project which will not be eligible for aid. For instance, if I go back, and so the assumption is 95% aidability, that's one of the differences between this model and what we did last year. I was being really safe in saying 90. When we actually looked at everything and just calculated it, 95 is the right answer. It's 95% aidable. What's not aidable is the ed center, the, there's some work at the Buildings and Grounds Garage. It's any non-instructional building, the MCC, so there's not, and we've also cut back on some of those things. So there was more work that was going to happen here. So that makes the overall aidability of the program higher, 90 to 95. So that's really everything I had, that, again, I'll just sort of review, the difference between last year and this year is the project, the program is smaller, right? The ask is less, 115.6, 98. We're anticipating getting more state aid than we were last year, because we looked at that more closely. The capital reserve is more, we're putting more down, right? So our borrowing and our costs will be lower, our borrowing costs will be lower. And, and, you know, our baseline is that the start of the project has shifted a little bit too, because obviously wasn't approved or not doing anything.
So by reducing the project from 115 to 98 million, that $70 million worth of projects that were taken out, what kind of exposure are we looking at?
In, in terms of what we're not doing?
Or not doing it, like if something breaks, what kind of exposure?
Well.
Do you want to go back to the other slide where you?
Yeah, we, we could, I mean, we could do that. I think the, I think the biggest exposure, probably, and, and I'd really want to consult with the architect, the engineers, but a big thing we had to take out was the boiler replacement for the middle school. Okay? We, we were working, we were operating on a couple of scenarios with the Capital Project Advisory Task Force. We started out at 75 million. And we realized, you know what, we, we could push the envelope a little bit, I say push the envelope, but we're still at a zero increase to the budget, and put back, and I've actually bolded it, put back the North Main Elementary School boiler replacement, and put back the Pine Tree boiler replacement. Those are big-ticket items.
So, so what's the exposure in the middle school? If that boiler system goes?
Well, I, I would want to consult with our engineer, but it, it might be one of those things where we, we repair, we repair it to limp along for a, a year. Or if there was a major problem, maybe we, I, I don't know legally if we could say we're going to like do that versus something else. You know, we'd have to explore that, that option. I mean, there, there is, there are provisions for emergency repairs. If there's a hurricane, the roof blows off, we're, we're, you know, we're able to fix it or replace it, but, but you're not supposed to do capital projects under emergency repair. It's supposed to be repairs.
Another thing about the boiler at the middle school, if in the middle of the winter, it's going to be a big deal.
Yeah, it would be. It would be.
How old is that boiler, do you know?
Uh, I, I think it's, it's one of the older ones, yeah. I think it's, I think it's, but there are three, so that's the other good news. There's three, and so we exercised them. They don't all need to be on to heat the building. There's redundancy.
Why do we take out the, that, the middle school is obviously older building than the high school, why are we replacing the high school boiler instead of the middle school?
High school boiler is a relatively inexpensive in-kind replacement. So in other words, it's more modern building, the boilers are, they, they don't work well. They don't function well. I think it's a design issue with them. It's about 1.8 million, whereas replacing the boiler at the middle school would involve much more piping, unit vents, it's, it's more like 12 million versus two.
So he had to say.
So, so the majority of that 17 million comes from the boiler in the middle school?
It's there. It's, it's other things, like you see replaced facade panels, exterior brick repointing, we cut that out. Cuts here for the ed center, we're going to replace the boiler here, we're going to upgrade the HVAC system here, we took that out, new site lighting, you know, there's some outdoor learning spaces and things that we took out. The Central Valley Elementary School security vestibule came out, because we put that into this year's budget. So I thought that was a, a good thing we did as a transfer to capital. You know, so it, it's all those non-essential items that we cut back on.
But to be clear, if that was included in the capital project, there would be 70%, 74.9% reimbursement.
Correct.
On the 12 million dollar cost.
Yep. It, it's, you have to make hard choices, right? We got, we have to, we look at it, that's why we had those guiding principles. We said, what are the guiding principles? Health safety is number one. So we're going to fix fire alarms, we're going to add security vestibules, you know, avoiding imminent failure, right? So if, if things are, the roof is leaking, it's failing, we got to fix that, you know? But, you know, otherwise, that's how we, that's how we were at 115, you know, we, we felt like that was getting it done. I, I think we'll be okay, and the way I had originally sort of couched this is phase one, phase two, right? So that still could be part of the analysis.
You have a security vestibule building hardening removed, though, under Central Valley Elementary.
Because we put it into this year's budget, Michael, so we don't need it as part of the capital program.
Same thing with the paving. Everything was paved this summer, but it was because you put it in a different line item.
Exactly right. The, the paving allowance didn't need to be there.
Essentially, my last question. Regarding health and safety being a priority, but we have ADA upgrades removed, is there a problem with that? Do we have to do that by a certain time?
No, I mean, that, that really had to do with putting an, installing an elevator here, the ed center.
Ah, okay.
And, and some other.
Which would not be state annual.
Right, correct. And it's expensive.
Yep.
And, you know, it may not be, we've gone many years without it, so.
Lately, we're not required to have it at this time?
Well.
Or required to have access?
If you do a major renovation, you have to then bring the building up to COBO or grandfather under your ADA.
Exactly right, Michael.
So, so in the past, we wouldn't have the numbers of how much it cost to repair the three boiler system at the middle school? I mean, if it cost $2 million to repair it?
It, it, I don't think it would cost that much. Boiler repairs generally are running us maybe somewhere between, you know, 20 and 40,000 dollars, depends. So when that happens, over and over, every winter in multiple buildings, it starts to add up.
And how long does it take usually to repair it?
Um, it can take a while, I think.
So how much disruption is there to the school process?
I mean, it's, if it was the middle of winter, it could be very disruptive. The, the difference with the middle school, as I said, though, is there's three boilers, so we have some redundancy there. So you could take one off, if one was failing.
So at 66% capacity, these boilers are able to maintain?
Yes, except for maybe the coldest days, you know, which is fewer, far between these days.
We talked about that as a committee, though, also. And again, I think part of the PR piece of it is, and you don't want it to be a scare tactic, but it is important for the taxpayers to realize that if something does have imminent failure at one of the other buildings, it could be a disruption in the school day. Because if we don't have heat in a building, I mean, fortunate or unfortunate, however you look at it, we would probably pivot to online learning, but it would potentially be a disruption that the kids couldn't be in the building. But we're not at that point, so.
Right.
But something to consider.
So, that's all I had. Any other questions?
You're going to post that to the website?
Sure.
And Facebook, since that's where most people seem to get their information from.
Absolutely.
Well, would you post it to Facebook yet until the board approves it?
Well, at least acknowledge it. Well, we are going to approve it, but then I'm saying, put it out there, maybe on Facebook, say, visit the website for important information regarding the capital project. Because as we've said, not everybody visits our website daily. But if they're prompted as they're scrolling through Facebook, oh, hey, there was a board meeting and they talked about this, maybe I'll go look at it.
So can we email our community also and let them know?
Absolutely.
I found this on the web. She's yelling at me, I'm sorry.
We could do that. And, and I think working with Carol, we'll, we'll put all those communications out, just a reminder for people to go onto our website and kind of read all of this information. We'll continue to, you know, provide that information to our families. And it's not just our families, right? It's everybody in the community.
Everybody, yeah, sure. I, I think the next step, sort of the mechanics, would be at our next, if everyone's in agreement, the, the next board meeting, we would pass a resolution for a referendum, it's like there's some paperwork, you know, bond resolution, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, put this information out there, and then it's on, you know, we would fully gear up for a public relations campaign. I mean, this is sort of a first blush. We can, you know, obviously enhance these things, and as Anthony mentioned, do all kinds of posters, other things that we've talked about, Carol and I have talked about, Elsie, so.
And the other thing is at our next board meeting, if someone wants to get up and speak about the project or make a statement, they certainly can do that, right? So that's why it gives everybody an opportunity to get up and speak if they so choose to do that.
Yep.
It's almost encouraged at this point, especially given the results of the survey, that it's, some of it seemed to be a lack of communication or, and so I think it's important that if they have questions, they're coming to the source to get the answer.
Absolutely.
Do you think, do you think a town hall would be a good idea?
We've done that before. When we, when we were passing the, the proposition for our fields, we did a lot of that. I mean, we didn't have a lot of community members come out, but the ones that did come out had really good questions, and we used their questions as a guiding principle for us as we moved forward. So yeah, I think that's a really good idea to have on, like a town hall, anybody who has a question can get up, and we would videotape that as well.
Where they can submit it before, maybe?
And ones who have questions usually do come. Usually spreading, you know, they talk to people. Correct. And what we do is, and we've done this in the past, Carol, is we allow people to submit questions ahead of time so that we can then have talking points. But we also allowed people in the audience, I was talking about when we were doing the fields, that we had community members. It wasn't a large group, but I thought it was well-represented, and people had very, very good questions, and we videotaped it, so they had that. You can watch it online on our, our website. So those were all really good things, and I think that we could do that again.
So, just to be clear before we wrap up, you're not going to post it now, and you're going to wait till the next meeting, or just, what's the expectation?
Well, does it have to be officially approved by us as a resolution before it can be posted?
Well, that's what I was asking.
I mean, I look at it, that we just had this meeting tonight, we put it out there, they can go back and watch this video, but I, if I'm sitting at home, can't see the, those figures on a video.
It does not have to be, we don't have to pass the resolution to post something. I mean, this is informational, right? And maybe there's some advantage that we waited a little while for school to begin, everybody's more tuned in with the district, we have this informational, I mean, it's simple, it's five slot, four slides, PowerPoint to show everybody, we put that out there, and on the 20th, it becomes official.
Right. But this is what's being proposed, right? This is what's being proposed.
This is the proposal.
So if someone's watching this, they'll see this, you're right, they won't be able to see the numbers, but they can go back if this is posted, they can see that, so absolutely.
Yeah, and there'll be lots more material like this.
Well, I was just asking for clarification, because it was said it was going to be posted, and then you said, well, after the next meeting. So just leaving here what the expectation is. So if we can do it now and there's no limitation, I think it should be done sooner than like...
If Elsie and the board feel like we should post this, then sure, of course.